Call the meeting to order, please. Welcome to Monday, April 29th, meeting of the St. John City Common Council. And we're going to start this evening with a land acknowledgement, and I'm going to send that over to Councillor Norton to read the land acknowledgement for us.
Certainly, Your Worship. The land on which the city of St. John or Menoquist is situated is the traditional territory of the Willaston Week. The Willaston Week along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq and Pesco-Tomacati, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources.
So let's take a few moments just to pause and reflect. Okay, I'll ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next item on the agenda is 2.1, Approval of Minutes of April 15.
Approval of Minutes of April 15. Councillor Hickey and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is the approval of the agenda. The first item, we would ask if item 12.1 could be removed from the agenda, as this will be presented at the next Finance Committee meeting. So that appeared on the agenda as Corporate Asset Management System Award. So to remove that. And then there are a number of additions that came from Committee of the Whole. The first one is 17.1, Agreement with Envision SJ. 17.2, Sale a Portion of Future Street Off Clint Drive. 17.3, Sale of LPP at 17 Montgomery Crescent. 17.4, Delegation of Temporary Use Authority to the Development Officer. 17.5, Corporate Asset Management Award. 17.6, Civic Recognition Awards. And 17.7, Code of Conduct Matter.
Okay, so I'll take Councillor Sullivan.
Your Worship, just because of lots of questions that I think councillors have received, wondering if we can take two minutes and have somebody from Engineering talk about recycling materials and that changeover that's coming.
Absolutely. City Clerk, where can we squeeze that in?
Thank you, Your Worship. So that can be added to the agenda as a supplemental item.
Okay.
And wherever the, you know, the mayor can request it go to whatever section of the agenda, but normally supplemental items would come under 16.
Well, let's put it in 16 because we'll have Director O'Reilly respond to that.
Okay.
Okay. That's recyclables. All right, so I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Councillor Hickey and Councillor Radwan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is the Disclosure of Conflict of Interest section.
Conflict of Interest. So I've got Councillor Stewart, Councillor Lowe, and Councillor Radwan on 17.7.
Yeah, that's 17.7.
All right. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is the Consent Agenda.
Over to you, Deputy, for the consent.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move 5.1 through to 5.7, please.
5.1 through to 5.7. I'll take a seconder on that. Councillor Sullivan, Councillor Lowe, you got a question?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about 5.5. Like, the contract, most contractors work Monday to Friday, and they don't work Saturday, Sunday. And I think the city should look at possibly changing the tender so that it would be Monday to Saturday, especially in the business community where, I mean, a prime example would be this weekend, and no reflection at all upon any of the contractors, Waterloo Street shut down from Friday until Monday morning. We've got small businesses all along there. And, I mean, the tender would go out. There's no doubt it would cost the city a little more money, because no doubt those working on Saturday would be probably paid time and a half or extra money, but the job would be done sooner, and it wouldn't be affecting the people that I feel it does affect, right? So, Michael.
Baker?
Yep. Through Your Worship to the councillor. It is something that we could add to the contract, or contract, specific contracts. It's not currently in the one on Waterloo Street. One of the options we also have is we can add like a bonus penalty clause, where we can either pay a bonus if they're done quicker, or give them a penalty if they don't achieve what the deadline that we've asked them to achieve. So I do know some other municipalities that do that. Or we can take the avenue of saying that they have to work Monday to Saturday for as many weeks as we say that it needs to get done.
Yeah, like, I mean, I can see in residential areas where it might not be mandatory to work a Saturday to get a job done. It's not inconvenient, ordinary residents, but when you get into the uptown business area, like, I mean, and I know Garden Street, for instance, doesn't have a lot of businesses on it, but it's an alleyway to businesses, right? And that looks like it's going to be tied up to November. That's what the paper said. But I would really like staff to look at areas where it affects the small business, Ernie-type business, but in this case, it's small businesses, that we can make it mandatory that they work six days on those jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Radwan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention for 5.3, great job to Kate Wilcott. Kate's always looking for money for arts, and she got $30,000, which is given by the province. Thank you to them. But it's such a great idea to do a mural in memory of Sheila Croto, and with benches there and a healing garden. It's very nice, and thank you to Pulse for collaborating as well with the city. It's a wonderful idea. I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you. Councillor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. Similar question to Councillor Lowe's, specific to 5.7. And I guess my concerns, I mean, kind of from the same area, but more so considerations to traffic diversion in those contracts. Like, what's the requirements of traffic diversion, including pedestrian traffic diversion? And I bring it up specific to some of the higher pedestrian traffic construction zones that don't necessarily, aren't necessarily getting, at least right now, adequate pedestrian diversion routes.
All of our contracts do include that the contractor has to provide routes for pedestrians. If there's specific areas that they're not, then please let us know so that we can ensure that the contractor is meeting that standard. In terms of, basically, for example, on Garden, Waterloo, it's all the exact same. It's a standard clause that we include in there for pedestrian traffic. And in terms of traffic, for Waterloo specifically, our plan is, hopefully, the piping will be done here shortly, so then that'll be another route for, that people will be able to get in the uptown for what Garden Street.
It's amazing how quickly they're moving on Waterloo Street specifically. The challenge is that there aren't any, there aren't any alternative pedestrian routes. Anyway, thanks very much, Mike. I appreciate it.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and I've got a seconder on the question. All in favor? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next item is the Members' Comments section.
Members' Comments. Over to you, Deputy.
I guess I jumped the gun. Anyway, so the mayor and I visited Centennial School to check out the Kindness Cafe, and it was put on by Mrs. McPartlin's grade three class. And this class has raised over $2,000 to donate to the North End Food Bank, and it surpasses last year's amount of $1,600. This is a great project for these kids who are in grade three, and they really work hard at it, and as you can tell by the numbers, they're well-supported. So congratulations to grade three at Centennial, Mrs. McPartlin's class. And along with the mayor, Councillors Lowe, Councillor Hickey, and myself attended the Day of Mourning at Lily Lake Hathaway Pavilion yesterday, where the mayor and I laid the wreath on behalf of the city of St. John for workers who were injured or died during the course of their employment. This event has really grown over the years, and I can say that this year, the weather actually cooperated for a change. It's normally cold and drizzly, but it was a beautiful day, and it was well-attended. And I want to thank everybody for showing up. And I just want to remind people that we have a new recycling program coming in by the province. It's for your recyclables, your tin cans, and your plastics, and your cardboard. Your regular garbage stays the same, collection day is the same. This new provincial initiative is being taken care of by a company called Circular Materials, and you can find them online at circularmaterials.ca. If you have any questions, I invite you to call them at 1-877-667-2626. And with that, I'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy, Councillor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks very much, Your Worship. I won't mention the Day of Mourning for too long, but just to further emphasize the 14 New Brunswick workers in this province that lost their lives over the course of their employment that were recognized yesterday. It was a pleasure to be at the memorial. On a more positive note, congratulations to Holly and Ken Singh, who opened up their new, their new, their reimagined hopscotch next door to where it was. It's a fabulous facility. It's actually, it opens today if anyone wants to go after this. Further, there's a couple more South End cleanups on the 4th, May 4th, and May the 11th. There are two more led by Pulse. Both good opportunities to get involved, and the full details are available through Pulse. Also, there was a lot of talk around council a couple of weeks ago about the Taking Out the Trash Initiative, and I want to offer some results, which were exceptional. 9,678 pounds of garbage taken off the streets of St. John over the course of a morning. Pretty impressive to be able to, to be able to turn to our citizens and have them, and have them step up and do that. So I think any opportunity we can around this table to celebrate people willing to lend a hand and support community in any way that is, I think deserves to be celebrated. So kudos, kudos to the entire team for doing that. Next year, we're on to 10,000 pounds. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor Sullivan, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. On behalf of mayor and council, I brought greetings to the New Brunswick Life Saving Society this past Saturday, and really want to give a shout-out to two of our organizations in St. John that won awards on Saturday night at the New Brunswick Life Saving Society. The Kennedy Games Aquatic Centre Commission for having the largest lifesaving program in all of New Brunswick, and the YMCA for having the largest leadership program in New Brunswick. So congratulations to those two organizations. Certainly, as summer is upon us, and being the city in the maritime surrounded by water with the beautiful band one side and the gorgeous St. John Willaston River on the other, incredibly important that we be safe around the water. So folks at the Lifesaving Society help us to do that, and for all the volunteers and lifeguards and lifesavers we have in St. John, thank you for the work you do. This coming Saturday, May 4th, Star Wars Day, at the Hope Centre in East St. John is a fundraising auction starting at 1:00 PM. Please be there to support this group as they fundraise, to bring some more newcomers to St. John. And lastly, we were given moose hide to wear on our lapels tonight. The Moose Hide Campaign is an Indigenous-led grassroots movement of men and boys, and all Canadians who are standing up against violence towards women and children. Wearing this moose hide signifies our commitment to honor, respect, and protect women and children in our life, and to work together to end violence against women and children, and all those along the gender continuum. For more information, all one word, you can look it up at moosehidecampaign.ca. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Radwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So another event that's coming up is Red Dress Day, and that's coming up on May the 5th, and details should be out fairly soon for that. I got to experience a few fun events. One was the, put on by the Arab Culture Club on the 21st. It was quite interesting to go into St. John High, my old stomping ground, and see a Canadian-Arabic orchestra, and they were fantastic. So if you missed it this year, try to, try to join in next year. On Saturday, I get to join a civic tech group to be a panelist, and what a creative, intelligent bunch trying to find new innovative ways to deal with technology, and to try to help people deal with getting identification so that they can get into housing and things like that. It was a really, really good conversation. And lastly, month of May is Asian Heritage Month, and I'm looking forward to the celebrations. The opening ceremony is at the Kent Theatre on Sunday, May the 5th, at 2:00 PM, and I hope to see some of you there. And I did share out their list on my socials, there's quite a few of them, but lots of fun things. They have some cooking classes, and some dates for the kids, lots of good things. You can always see some good entertainment there. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ogden, over to you next.
I knew I shouldn't have gone after Hickey, because everything, I was going to say he said. But anyway, I want to thank those people who have been doing the, doing the cleanups. There's actually Suzanne Boudreaux and Winston Tyler are continuing this week on City Road, and the hillside in front of St. Joe's, and in front of the old General. And the amount of litter and garbage they're collecting is unbelievable, but I want to thank them again, and everything Councillor Hickey said, I agree with. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Norton, you're next.
Thank you, Worship. Dominion Park cleanup, another beach season, another season of improvements for Dominion Park Beach. And thank you to JTR, Tim Hortons, and Murphy Hospitality for making that beach cleanup possible, and all the many hands that come out to deliver Park better than they found it. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. All right, I'll wrap it up. Yes, I did attend one of the cleanups in Waterloo Village. I object to cleaning up private property, so I think we, I need to get in touch with the province. We need a few stiffer fines for that. I should not be on private property, but you have to be in some cases because it's not good. So with there is that, I wanted to mention quickly the Day of Mourning. It had an amazing turnout. There were 48 wreaths laid that day, and Stacy Brown of the city of St. John laid one for her husband, in remembrance of her husband, who was just killed this January in a workplace accident. So that was a pretty raw and tough moment for her. I wanted to also send our condolences on behalf of not only council, but the city of St. John to Richard Burpee's family. He passed away on April 18th. I pulled a little bit of information off of his, off of his obituary and off of the St. John Energy website. He was the former president and CEO of St. John Energy. He spent 40-year career at St. John Energy. He began as a summer student, and he was hired on later as an engineer, believe he was an electrical engineer. And under his management, he expanded St. John Energy from its traditional role and onto the path of the modern company that it is today, and it is still evolving. He was president from 1985 to 2006, and he rebranded from Civic Hydro to St. John Energy. He moved St. John Energy to operate at arm's length from the city of St. John, and he brought to life the concept of consumer product. So he was, he was a mover and a shaker, I'll say, in that world. And I had met him, but after he had retired, when he was actually on the museum board. So he was a person that also gave back to his community. So to his family and his friends, we send our condolences. And that's it for me. So next item, City Clerk.
Next, we have a number of proclamations under item 7 on the agenda. The first one is 7.1, and this is for Lyme Awareness Month.
Whereas Lyme disease is one of the fastest-growing vector-borne illnesses in the world, and whereas the population of ticks, the primary vector for the transmission of Lyme disease in New Brunswick and other parts of Canada is growing and expanding in New Brunswick, and whereas the number of New Brunswickers suffering from Lyme disease is increasing from one year to the next, and whereas awareness plays a key role in making this disease known to the public, as well as the steps to take to prevent contacting the disease, now therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Reardon of the city of St. John, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Lyme Awareness Month in the city of St. John. We need colder winters to impact this. We need a good, hard frost for a couple of months at least. Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 7.2, Melanoma and Skin Cancer Awareness Month.
Where it is imperative that communities across Canada be reminded of the importance of sun safety, and whereas overexposure to UV radiation is one of the major causes of melanoma and non-melanoma skin cancers, and whereas skin cancer is the most common of all cancers, one in six Canadians born in the 1990s will get skin cancer in their lifetimes, and whereas many people seek sun without taking the advisable precautionary measures and are unaware that any darkening of skin color, including a tan, is indicative of UV damage to the skin, and whereas skin self-examination should be performed on a monthly basis because skin cancers are highly treatable when detected early, but need to be detected early, and whereas Savior Skin Foundation is dedicated to the fight against non-melanoma skin cancers, melanoma and ocular melanoma through nationwide education, advocacy, and awareness initiatives, therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Reardon of St. John, do hereby declare the month of May 2024 as Melanoma and Skin Cancer Awareness Month in the city of St. John. And remember that your skin is your largest organ. Next item, City Clerk.
Next, YMCA Month.
Okay. Whereas the YMCA has made outstanding contributions and positive impacts on our community, and whereas the YMCA has been a steadfast pillar in our community, embodying values of community service, healthy living, and youth development, and whereas with over 170 years of dedicated service to the community, the YMCA has played an essential role in fostering inclusivity, promoting diversity, and bringing people of all ages and backgrounds together, now therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Reardon of St. John, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as YMCA Month in the city of St. John. And they are a wonderful partner for us. Next item, City Clerk.
Next, we have a proclamation for World Press Freedom Day.
Whereas World Press Freedom Day was proclaimed by the UN General Assembly in December of 1993, following the recommendation of UNESCO's General Conference, and whereas a healthy, professional news media is essential for the proper functioning of civil society and democracy at the local, regional, federal, and international levels, and whereas May 3rd acts as a reminder to governments of the need to respect their commitment to press freedom, and a day of reflection among media professionals about issues of press freedom and professional ethics, and whereas it is an appropriate, sorry, whereas it's an opportunity to celebrate the fundamental principles of press freedom, to assess the state of press freedom throughout the world, to defend the media from attacks on their independence, and to pay tribute to journalists who have lost their lives in the line of duty, and whereas the city of St. John is among at least 29 municipalities, home to 13 million people in nine provinces across Canada that have passed motions during the last two years voicing support for journalism in aid of democracy, now therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Reardon of St. John, do hereby proclaim May 3rd, 2024, as World Press Freedom Day in the city of St. John. Supporting democracy. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 7.5, National Police Week.
Whereas the government of Canada recognizes the week of May 12 to 18, 2024, as National Police Week, and whereas the St. John Police will be recognized as providing exemplary service and leadership, and reflective of the public safety needs of the community to enhance the quality of life, and whereas the St. John Police has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement body, which increasingly provides a vital public service, and whereas every day, our law enforcement officers render dedicated service to our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police force, recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against deception and the weak, against oppression or intimidation, now therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Reardon of St. John, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 to 18, 2024, as National Police Week, in honor of those whose dedication, professionalism, and significant daily contributions keep our citizens and communities safe. Next item, City Clerk.
The final proclamation is 7.6, Day of Mourning.
Whereas every year, nearly 1,000 Canadian workers are killed by workplace injuries, and many more die from occupational disease, and whereas thousands more are permanently disabled, and whereas tens of thousands are injured or made ill, and whereas concerned Canadians are determined to prevent these tragedies by, one, observing April 28th as the Day of Mourning to remember these victims of workplace injuries and disease; two, by renewing our efforts to seek stronger safety and health protections, better standards and enforcement, and fair and just compensation; and three, rededicating ourselves to improving safety and health in every Canadian workplace. Now therefore I, Mayor Donna Nod Reardon of St. John, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2024, as a Day of Mourning in recognition of workers killed, injured, or disabled on the job in the city of St. John, and I encourage everyone to work together to make safety a priority. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is under consideration of bylaws, item 10.1, and it's a law to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage, and this is third reading tonight.
Okay, so I'll get my paperwork back over here. Okay, sending this one over to Commissioner Fogan for the intro.
Thank you, Worship. To council, for consideration tonight for third reading is a bylaw that would give authority to the commissioner of the water utility to determine if there's an exceptional use of the water system, and to determine the terms and the conditions that would exist associated with that special use. With that, I'll turn it back over to council.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, I'll turn it over to you for the motions I need.
Two motions are required here, Your Worship. One to approve third reading by entirety, and the second motion by title.
Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve reading by entirety. Councillor Sullivan and Councillor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve reading by title. Pardon me, I have to read the whole thing on this. That's okay.
The second one is titled on, Your Worship, but bylaw of the city of St. John entitled a bylaw respecting water and sewage, enacted on the 7th day of June 2004, is hereby amended as follows. One, Section 1 is amended by adding the following definition. Exceptional use means any customer's use of water that is in the commissioner's sole discretion requires unique conditions to protect the overall water infrastructure and supply for the city. Two, Section 30 is amended- Two, Section 30 is amended to add the following subsections immediately following subsection 31, 35. If commissioner determines that an exceptional use exists, the commissioner may issue direction in writing to the customer with any terms and conditions that the commissioner, in their sole discretion, determines necessary to regulate the exceptional use. The failure of the customer to comply with the terms and conditions directed by the commissioner may result in the discontinuance of the supply of water at the commissioner's sole discretion. Thirty-six, any damage to the city's infrastructure associated with a customer's failure to comply with the commissioner's written direction in accordance with subsection 35 shall be the sole responsibility of the customer, and the city may incur any expense necessary to remediate the damage, and any expenses so incurred by the city may be collected by, may be collected by the inclusion of the amount incurred by the city in the customer's water and sewage bill. And now a second motion to approve third reading by title.
Counselor Hickey and Counselor Redwine on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
All right. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is Item 13.1, and this is a Growth Committee update with respect to Affordable Housing Soft Cost Grant Program.
Okay, deputy, I'm sending this over to you for the introduction.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, the Growth Committee is pleased to recommend to council that the city adopt a new Affordable Housing Soft Cost Grants Program. This program recognizes the considerable upfront cost to developing affordable housing and will provide up to 25,000 in grants to registered nonprofit organizations to develop eligible affordable housing projects in St. John. The feedback from the Growth Committee was that a grant committee composed of appointed city staff would also help speed up the application timeframes and ensure certainty for applicants. The Soft Cost Grant Program is funded through the city's Housing Accelerator Fund project, and we are looking forward to seeing the outcomes of this new program. Housing Manager Andy Reed is available if there are any questions for staff, and I'd be pleased to move the recommendation.
Excellent. So I've got a mover on the recommendation. Counselor Ogden, I'll take on the seconder. Anyone have any questions for staff? Mr. Andy Reed is here. Answer any questions. All right, if there are no questions, then I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, City Clerk, next item.
Next is Item 15.1, under General Correspondence, and it's from the Savior Skin Foundation. Request to present, recommendation is refer this matter to the Growth, to the Public Safety Committee.
Okay. I'll take a, so that's the recommendation in the kit. Counselor Sullivan and the deputy are moving that on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is Item 15.2. It's a collection of letters from the public regarding 1671 Sandy Point Road. There's a recommendation to refer these letters to the Growth Committee.
Okay. Set for, okay. Counselor Lowe, and then over to Counselor Sullivan for the question.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just a question through you to perhaps the civic clerk. There were six letters. Normally, we list individual letters, and there was a choice made to bundle them. Did these six letters come in together and thus they're one item, or just because they were the same subject, these six letters on the surplus land at Rockwood Park are bundled?
Your Worship, yes. So it was, a decision was made because it was all the same topic, just to save space on the agenda to put them all under one.
So, so the six letters didn't come, they're all individuals who sent them in with regards to the sale of Rockwood Park?
Individual letters, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a recommendation on the floor. It's been seconded, and I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is Item 15.3, St. John Slow Pitch League, Advertising to Offset Operational Costs. There's a recommendation to receive for information as this is part of the rates review program that's underway.
Okay, Counselor, I will say quickly, and then I'll take the questions, is Mr. Dion has been in contact with them, has had some communication with them, and that the process hasn't been defined yet, so that's why it's being referred over. But I've got a couple of questions here. Counselor Ogden, you're up first.
Yeah, I'd just like to acknowledge these people, slow pitch dropped to, I don't know, 17, 18 teams, and at one time it was, I think it was 40-some teams. Recreation's dropped in the city, and it's good to see what they're doing. I think they're showing some initiative to raise some money and such, and they're starting to grow again, and that's exactly this council. It's the first council in years to declare that recreation is a priority, so I'd like to encourage them and encourage staff to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stewart.
I agree with Counselor Ogden on that. I'd also like to know if there's anything that's on our books or in recent, in our recent history that would prevent this group from doing what they're asking for, putting signage on the fences? Do we know?
Cao.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, so this, as mentioned, is really part of the rates review study that's underway, so there's already been, one or two groups come forward who have been denied in the interest of looking at it more holistically, and so that there's criteria established and a process to actually deal with how this would be managed and that sort of thing. So it is a consideration that we're looking at as part of the rates review and something that will be coming back as part of that overall study that's being done.
It's just one more of these things that we'd like to see something happen sooner than later, because they're, they're getting underway already, and tournaments are going, they're booked in Moncton, they're booked in Fredericton. We need them in St. John.
Counselor Ogden, if you would like to back on?
Yes. One, one other point to partly what Counselor Stewart's saying, is that you can grow recreation. It's, and we've gone the other way, but you can grow recreation. Met with a lot of groups lately, and they all have plans to grow. We've lost two rinks and I think five fields, and, but we can actually grow recreation, and I think these people are taking the initiative, and that's good. Thank you.
All right, so I'll take a mover and a seconder on that, please. Counselor Hickey and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 15.4, a letter from David Caird with regard to flyer distribution bylaw, and the recommendation is to refer this to the CAO for follow-up.
Okay. I will just say quickly, after talking to the CAO, that this is an open file, and so it's basically to come forward for clarification, but they're always answering questions, apparently, on this file, so the recommendation is to refer it back over to the CAO for the clarification. So I'll take them, oh, is there, sorry. Deputy, got a question?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm getting more complaints more often again. It stopped for a while, but we're back to where we were in the beginning, and these flyers are being thrown on the road and in the driveways again. So I think if we're going to look at this again, we need to look at it with a little better lens. You know, there is the option to opt-in rather than to opt-out, and I think we talked about it before, and we may be coming close to that opt-in option. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hickey.
Just for clarification, Your Worship, displaying a no-flyer sign on your property desubscribes you, correct? That's your end subscription. Okay. If anyone needs a sticker, I have a bunch of them. Just message me, I'll mail it to you.
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call on Mr. O'Reilly, Director O'Reilly, and he'll, he's gonna give us a little bit of a background here.
Yeah, first to answer your question directly. Counselor Hickey, you're absolutely right. That's one of two criterias that caused those flyers to stop, is the placement of the placard. What I'll suggest of all of council and directly to the community is, it's best to call the city on these concerns if you have them, 506-658-4455. We have limited staff, we do have staff involved in enforcement of this bylaw, and we're always happy to follow up on concerns related to this, and we will be doing it in Mr. Caird's place as well. But certainly contacting the city directly is the best way to get these concerns initiated and for us to follow up on them.
Thank you. Counselor Redwine.
Thank you, Mayor. Through to Director O'Reilly, I'm just wondering, isn't there a fine attached to this as well? If somebody is caught putting flyers where they're not welcome?
Yes, absolutely. There are both administrative penalties, as well as a full-fledged $300 penalty that we can apply. I'll just say, we've had two official, and this is where it's important for the community to get ahold of us, we've had two official complaints come through since the bylaw started. In both those cases, we were able to work with the actual supplier of those flyers to cause that action to stop. So we had the positive outcome without having to go to the administration of fines, but we do have the ability as part of the bylaw to issue fines if there's non-compliance.
Well, that's good. Thank you, and hopefully they'll just respect people's wishes, and you won't have to start handing out fines. But $300, I think there's better things you could do than have to pay a fine.
Okay, so I'll take a mover and a seconder on that one. Counselor Ogden and Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is an item that was added. It would be 16.1, and it's an update on the recycling program.
Counselor Sullivan, I'll just send that over to you really briefly, so you can explain why we've added it to the agenda.
Thanks, Your Worship. Simply because I ever received several, and I think my fellow counselors, questions just about the changeover from the city of St. John collecting recyclables to Circular Materials collecting recyclables, and most importantly, their website talks about, you are in this day, if you're in this neighborhood, in week one and week two, but it doesn't do a great job, in my opinion, of explaining what week one and week two, when does it start, and so perhaps if we could take a few minutes for the folks who are the experts on it to do a little more explanation, it would help the public.
Excellent. Director O'Reilly, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship, and I've been before council before to, you know, describe in general this change, but I will kind of go through it again just for clarity. So as council is aware, we did go through a change in October 2022, where the city began collecting three different streams of waste, garbage compost, as well as curbside recycling. At the time that we were implementing those changes, the province of Brunswick was going through an operationalizing regulation changes across the entire province. And what they've initiated is, in addition to what they call the Extended Producer Responsibility Program, that system is already in place for tires, oils, et cetera, but they're extending it to a stream called the paper and packaging stream. And basically, what that change is, is instead of taxpayers of a municipality being responsible for the collection of recyclables, that financial responsibility is being changed over to the producers of those recyclable materials. And that collection of producers hired a nonprofit company called Circular Materials to manage that on their behalf across the entire province. That change, of course, will affect the city of St. John and the residents of St. John as well. So as of May 1st, and I'll certainly answer the specifics around the schedule, but as of May 1st, so this coming Wednesday, the city will no longer collect curbside recycling, and it will be done by a contractor that Circular Materials hired, which is called Miller Waste. That's happening this Wednesday. So there are two significant changes happening for all the community. First of all, we have been collecting recycling at night up to present day, so as of Wednesday, that will change from nighttime collection by the city to daytime collection by Miller Waste. In addition to that, a significant amount, about 50% of the community, is actually changing which day over a two-week cycle their recycling is being collected. Our last night of collection will actually be Tuesday night of this week, so anybody who has the regular collection of recyclables for Tuesday night, the city will collect it as normal, and they will take over on Wednesday morning. The best source of information, which the deputy provided in his earlier comments, is a website called circularmaterials.ca/SaintJohn. That website has all your information available for changes to residents of St. John. Right now, there's a map available on that website with all the changes that are occurring to curbside recycling. So the first day in that two-week collection that's provided on the website is called Wednesday, Week 1. So anybody within the Wednesday, Week 1 zone on that website will have their collection collected for, the recyclables collected for the first time by Miller Waste on Wednesday daytime. Just as an example, the Wednesday daytime collection includes locations like Ellerdale Street area, Forest Hills, a section off Rossay Road, and the Roxbury Reading area. There will be, so the city already, city, sorry, there's, there's an independent website application called Recollect that many residents have been using to find out what day of the week their collection is occurring. That application is being updated by Circular Materials and Miller Waste. It will be updated in the next couple of days, so people can actually type in their address and find what day of the week it is occurring. But in the meantime, that website is the best place to look, and again, the Wednesday, Week 1 collection, which is the dark purple on their website, is the first day of collection daytime by Miller Waste. Circular Materials does have a phone number as well, which the deputy mayor has provided. Miller Waste, which are the actual collectors in St. John, also have a phone number, and they're the first contacts that people are being asked to reach out to if they have any concerns responding concerning recycling. And their phone number is 1-833-644-1163. Again, that phone number and all the information is available on that Circular Materials website, which I provided earlier. So like I said, the chains are literally happening between Tuesday night this week and Wednesday morning this week, between the city collecting and Miller Waste, with the new collection day, first collection being at Wednesday, Week 1, on their map. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Counselor Ogden, you had a question?
Yes. Tim, does that mean this Wednesday, May 1st, if you're on a Wednesday, you stay to Wednesday, and it's every two weeks?
Yeah, so on their website, and that's part of the problem too, is the city collects certain, from certain places on a two-week cycle. Miller Waste is actually changing what day of the week people are collected on in a two-week schedule. So if you were collected by the city on a Wednesday night, it might be a completely different day of the week that you're recollected over the two-week cycle.
Are they changing the whole thing, or just some?
About 50% of the city is changing, in terms of what day they're collected. But again, the best thing to do is go on that website that I provided, the Wednesday, Week 1 is the first day, which, which again, I described as general locations, that's the first day in which they're collecting on the new schedule.
Okay, so that's Miller's, and I noticed it's an 833 number, so they're not based in St. John?
They're not based in St. John, but they do, of course, have an operation started in St. John because they're operating out of St. John.
Okay, so people have a problem, they call Miller's, I can't remember the phone number you just said.
Yeah, so 1-833-644-1163. But again, that website, circularmaterials.ca/SaintJohn, which is easier to, you know, to remember, that has all the information on it, including their phone number.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just pulling up our own website, and I know it's not ours, but perhaps I might suggest to staff that all the contacts that we just got from Mr. O'Reilly in a nice big box on our website, as soon as people land there, it isn't us. Here's the phone numbers, here are the links, and that'll make people easier, because folks are gonna look to us first, and if it's there, it's easy for us to direct people, it's right on our front page. That would be great. Thanks.
All right. Sounds good. Next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next are the items that came from Committee of the Whole. So the first one is the amended and restated membership agreement with Envision, and the resolution would be that the city enter into the amended and restated members agreement with Envision St. John, the regional growth agency, generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole, held at its meeting held on April 29th, for the purpose of updating the contractual relationships following legislative reform, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said amended and restated members agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto.
Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Redwine on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 17-2, and it's tentative sale of portion of Future Street off Clint Drive, and the resolution is that the city enter into an agreement of purchase and sale, generally in the form as attached, as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on April 29th, with Ronald Carl Cropley, for the sale of a portion of PID 5520000, identified on the attached amending subdivision plan as Part A, containing an area of 1,250 square meters, that the city retain a local government service easement for its infrastructure within the subject lands, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effect this transaction.
Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Lowe on the question. All in favor? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next is 17.3, tentative sale of LPP at 17 Montgomery Crescent, and the resolution would be that council seek the concurrence of the planning advisory committee to remove the land for public purpose designation for the property identified as PID 55173991, and in the event the planning advisory committee agrees that the city deemed the said property surplus to its needs, two, the subject to the planning advisory committees concurring that the city enter into an agreement of purchase and sale, generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on April 29th, with Mike Kavanaugh Homes, Inc., for the sale of parcel of land at 17 Montgomery Crescent, PID 55173991, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effect this transaction.
Take a motion for that. Counselor Radwan and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next is 17.4, delegation of temporary use authority to the development officer. The resolution would be resolved that the mayor issue a letter to the planning advisory committee on behalf of council requesting the planning advisory committee delegate the authority for authorizing temporary use to the development officer.
Take a motion, Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Ogden on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next is Corporate Asset Management System, item 17.5. Resolution is that the city enter into the software license and maintenance agreement with Azteca Systems LLC and Esri Canada Limited in the form attached to this M&amp;C, for the purpose of acquiring the software necessary to support the city's new asset management solution, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said software license agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto, that the city enter into the professional services agreement with Esri Canada Limited in the form attached to this M&amp;C, for the purpose of securing services to assist in the implementation of the city's new asset management solution, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said software license maintenance agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto, and three, that the city enter into the City Works Online Managed Services Agreement with Esri Canada Limited in the form attached to this M&amp;C, for the purpose of having Esri Canada Limited hosting and provision of managed service environment and maintenance, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said City Works Online Managed Service Agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto.
Okay, I'll take a motion for that. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Hickey on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next is 17.6, the Civic Recognition Awards, and the resolution would be resolved that the list of award recipients for Citizen of the Year and Council Accommodation as recommended by Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on April 29th, 2024, be approved.
Approval of the chancellor, the deputy, and Counselor Hickey on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
The final item is 17.7, and it's with respect to the code of conduct matter.
Okay, well, I've got three councillors that are gonna leave here. You gotta come back and adjourn the meeting, yes.
Are we ready?
Why's your voice on back there?
That's the computer that runs the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So the final item is 17.7, it's with respect to council code of conduct, and the, the resolution is resolved that council accepts the findings of the investigator and her report dated March 22, 2024, that Counselor Radwan breached sections of the code of conduct bylaw, and accepts the remedial actions recommended by Committee of the Whole, including that the details of the sanction imposed remain private.
Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Norton on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Lowe, you coming back in?
Hello, Jerry.
Okay, Counselor Norton and Counselor Hickey. Okay.